And over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to January 17, 2023, Washington County Board of Commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other regular county services is now meeting this regular session, January 17, 2023. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Threes.
Here.
Commissioner Phi.
Present.
Vice Chair Rogers.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Moss. The next item on our agenda today is public communication. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address the commission for up to two minutes?
We do, Madam Chair. First up, we have Dale Feek. Dale?
Welcome, Mr. Feek.
Long time with the chair. No, you, Madam Chair. Much respect what you do, Madam Chair Harrington. I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. I sent you three emails, one of those as spokesperson and chair, the other one just as Dale Feek. The last one I sent to you this morning. Those three written comments, the one I sent to you this morning has, well, three comments are Merkley, Senator Merkley, Catherine, Chair Catherine George, she's the Chair of the Environmental Ecology Commission, and also Ken Holmes, which has been mentored in the work session. The other two I sent previously was Galen Alduski, he's an environmental person for Milwaukee, the city of Milwaukee, and I'm really trying to communicate and connect all the people that are really serious about climate change, and they are in Milwaukee. And the third thing is 60 minutes, not adapt, need to act now. And so those are the three written comments that I sent to you. And I just talked to Chuck this morning, and Forest Grove does not have a timer. And I make public comment to Forest Grove councilors, and it's really a problem when you don't know how much time you have. And so Chuck, what he said was, that's open source. And so I'm going to connect Chuck with the city manager and his powers-to-be in Forest Grove to make sure they get a timer so that I don't have to guess, and the chair or the vice chair doesn't have to keep track of the time like they used to do in the county. Instead of listening to the people speaking, you're looking at a timer. What a waste of time. That's a joke. Okay, all right. Anyway, the thing I sent to you this morning had to do with Senator Jeff Merkley's keynote speech at the 50 Years Clean Water Act conference that I said I was going to go to and invited other people to go. And because John Patterson reacted so eloquently about Dr. Martin King's "I Have a Dream" speech, I forward that to you, and please read what he said. And he has a link in there also from what I sent you before about how he rode his bicycle in every state in the United States and ended up in Congress and made public comment. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Clerk Moss?
Next, we have Lynette Hoffler. Lynette?
Good morning. Let's see, is that about right? I never can figure out these things. My name is Lynette Hoffler. I'm a resident in Banks, Oregon, District 4 of Washington County. I'm a PCP for Precinct 301. I'm here today, Madam Chair and Commissioners, to speak to you regarding Item D on your agenda today, appointing planning commissioners for District 2 and 4. I applied last April when you had a vacancy and wasn't selected then to fill that. And then I was contacted in the fall, October, November, I can't quite remember, to see if I still was interested because these positions were coming open. I said yes. I was asked by land use folks if I had anything to add to my application. I said, no, not really, and I figured I'd actually be speaking with somebody or meeting with somebody. I was invited to come to the work session last week and was told it would be nine, and then that item was moved to two. And then basically, I realized after the fact that that wasn't a place where I was going to learn more or hear conversation, it was to accept the appointments that were already decided. So I just wanted to express my disappointment in the process. I know everybody's busy and everything's technology now, but for such an important position as a planning commissioner for four years, I would recommend that at least you have one in-person interview. And I feel that I was highly qualified for the position, but never really got a chance to speak to that more fully. And ultimately, I recognize that when I looked at the packet that I received the day of the work session, the map shows that every current member and person applying to be on the commission lives inside a UGB. I'm the only person that lives in a rural area, and I think that's extremely important that you seek rural representation. We have very different issues, and I've been in this community for 45-plus years, serving folks in many ways, including land use. So I just wanted to put that out there for the record and ask you to reconsider what you're doing with your appointments today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette.
Thank you for joining us today. Clerk Moss, anyone else?
We did have one other sign-up, but I do not see them in the room or online, so that will conclude our part for right now.
All right. Well, perhaps that person will join us later in the meeting. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of five different items: one set of minutes, one item from support services, one item from land use and transportation, one item from three different departments, and one item from human resources. What are the wishes of the commission?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye or raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to boards and commissions. The first item here is to appoint planning commission members for District 2 and District 4. And if I could just beg for your forgiveness for a moment, we have a motion before us. We had six different applicants for these two positions, and we have a recommendation to appoint Mike Frey and Joe Kaiser to the planning commission, each for a four-year term, expiring January 31 of 2027. What are the wishes of the commission? Commissioner Willie?
Yeah, if I could just respond, I guess, to Lynette. Thank you for our conversation last week. You gave me a lot of good information. I appreciate that, and I just ask that you stay involved and engaged, and we will certainly find a place for you. We have room on our Rural Roads Committee. If that doesn't interest you, then I certainly will keep your mind in consideration for future appointments on the planning commission, although District 4 doesn't have any coming up. I encourage you to stay in the play here. So thank you. Thank you for your time last week in the conversation. Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this slate. Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this motion, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have a recommendation to appoint Michelle Williams, Lucia Benavides, and Ansley Venture, and to reappoint David Eppleheimer as members of the Public Health Advisory Council for the term of February 1 of this year, 2023, through January 31 of 2027. What are the wishes of the commission?
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have a action item, and this is with regard to our upcoming strategic planning effort. I'd like to turn things over to our county administrative officer, Ms. Tanya Angie. Ms. Angie?
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and good morning, Board. Really pleased to bring forward to you for board action today. Next steps on the community strategic plan. So the purpose of today's presentation is to describe why the county is pursuing a strategic plan, review purpose of a strategic planning program, discuss options for initiating the program, and then memorialize board direction. So let's talk about where we've been and why the board has prioritized a strategic planning process. The county's current strategic plan dates back to 1986, although it was updated in 1990 and 1993. We've previously described all the changes with your board that have occurred since 1986, and we only have to remember where we were in 1986 just to realize how long ago that was. Technology changes are especially striking, and I know personally I had to get a new phone this weekend, and just even changes in one version of a phone can be really challenging. Approximately 10% of householders had home computers in 1986, 10% of households. Intel's brand-new chip was released that made home computers as fast as mainframe computers of that time, and the first iPhone was released in 2007. And now, in 2023, the devices we carry in our pocket are much more powerful than those home computers in 1986. So additional why, in 1990s, a series of measures were passed that disrupted the way property taxes were levied. The result was a freeze on property taxes, a reduction in local control, overfunding inequities in tax rates between communities, and even between neighbors. County services have also changed with the passage of the regional affordable housing measures in 2018, House Bill 2001, the passage of the American Rescue Plan, and as a result of the complex and interconnected issues that are facing the Washington County community. And our community has changed. The Washington County community has changed since 1986, as has the organization that serves it. In 1986, the population was 28,000 and 92% white. The county budget was $107 million, and we had a workforce of 876. Today, Washington County has a population of more than 600,000 and is increasingly ethnically and racially diverse. The county budget is $1.6 billion, and we have more than 2,300 employees providing services to the community every day. If I take you back to 1986 and a workforce of 876, I want to share one data point that I just learned from our Human Resources Department with the closeout of 2022. In 2022, they conducted 511 recruitments because of the diversity of our funding resources here in Washington County. And we also, at the same time, though, have financial constraints, and this is another item that has dramatically changed since the 1980s in the county's financial situation. Net revenue, which is the dark green line, is not keeping up with expenditures, the red line. And as the board is aware, the county has been using one-time funds for many years to close the gap. I will not be spending time to review the county's financial context in this presentation. However, for our community members who may be watching or listening, we have had several board presentations on our financial context. And so that leads us to prioritization. The change in our community, combined with financial constraints, requires strategy, and prioritization is essential. Through the creation of a strategic plan, the board would be establishing a practice of engaging the community to identify needs, prioritization, and setting goals and developing strategies and actions to address these needs. And this brings us to the management system. The strategic plan is a foundation of management system that is being developed here at Washington County. This includes our budget transformation process, establishing the county's first capital improvement plan, our long-term financial plan, and with the strategic plan at the center. As your county administrator, one of my responsibilities is to align the organization towards the board's long-term goals and priorities for the community. A strategic plan makes the county's priorities, goals, and actions transparent and open to the community, allowing both the board and community to hold the organization accountable to the outcomes that are important to the community. So progress to date, your board has made progress in the strategic planning journey over the last 18 months, and this is despite the many disruptions that we've all shared together, including continued response to the pandemic and wildfires. And we've stayed focused on continuing to walk through a high-level framework, scope, and process which has brought us here today. I want to just take a moment and thank the board for your leadership, because under your leadership, you have created a solid foundation for our strategic plan work together as we strive for a one-Washington County future. As we discussed at your board's roundtable on January 5, we have a few options for developing a strategic plan. For the benefit of the community, I will briefly walk through these three options. Option one, a comprehensive strategic planning program, which would include engaging a consultant through an RFP process. We would engage ACRE to co-develop the RFP and engage them in the selection process. This option includes broad and extensive community engagement. This option is also the most resource- and time-intensive. As we discussed, the cost for this project could be anywhere starting from $250,000 and upwards. This is just a preliminary estimate and will entirely depend on the scope of community engagement that is ultimately selected. The project could be initiated during the first half of 2023 with a potential completion at the end of 2024 or 2025. This will be dependent on the extent of community engagement that will be defined through the RFP process. Then, option two. We have an urgent need for direction and prioritization for the organization, and this is really brought to light with our budget situation. In this option, the board would develop an initial, I want to stress, an initial set of goals. The board is the organization's closest connection to our community. This option could provide clarity and prioritization for the organization on a faster timeline. The estimated cost for this project is around $20,000 for consultant facilitator support, and we do have funds set aside within our adopted 2022-23 budget. This project could be initiated in February, March, with initial goals and strategies anticipated to be completed by July of 2023. And then we move on to option three, which really combines the strategies I both talked about in option one and two. This recognizes the value of working with ACRE to develop a comprehensive planning program, including robust community engagement, while simultaneously leveraging the board's knowledge and connection to the community to address urgent needs through development of an initial plan. I'm going to move on to the next slide. And on the next slide, and I want to let the board know, we continue to evolve the graphic after input and happy to take further input on this graphic. This graphic depicts options one and two combined. It demonstrates that the initial plan is developed while we begin the development of a comprehensive strategic plan and strategic planning program. It also demonstrates that the strategic planning program continues well beyond the initial plan. So the requested action today is for your board to move forward with option three, so that staff can work on securing a consultant in moving forward the initial planning process. And that concludes my report.
And just for the benefits of our audience, ACRE is a four-letter acronym that stands for the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. It helps to inform our board as well as staff. So Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Angie? Seeing no questions, we have a proposed motion before us. Do we have such a motion?
I move.
Do we have a second? I'll read it. Go ahead.
Would you like me to read?
Yes, that's wonderful.
I move to direct staff.
Can we put it back up on the screen?
It's okay, I got my, it's okay. Staff, I have my notes up. I move to direct staff to pursue option three from the memo and to develop a community strategic plan, working closely with ACRE and eventually with robust community engagement, while also looking at an urgent need for prioritization through creation of initial goals, actions, and strategies.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Threes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of moving forward, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion is unanimous, five to zero. So drumroll, please. We are hereby moving forward with the development of an updated community strategic plan here in Washington County. Thank you very much, Ms. Angie. Appreciate it.
And yes, thank you, Tanya, for your work, the staff's work on this. This is something we've talked about since you arrived day one, certainly something Commissioner Threes and I have talked about since our arrival in 2019. So thank you for moving this ahead. It's a great project.
Along with the community. Onward ho we go together. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is our second public comment period for today's meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us today?
We do, Chair Harrington. First up, we have Richard, and then we'll follow that by Lois. So Richard? All right, we can do that. Coy?
Thank you for this opportunity.
Just to clarify, are the three of you here as a group?
Yes.
Then you get 10 minutes as a group?
As a...
Okay.
My name is Coy Lay, now living in Tualatin. I am here to testify about the situation at the WoodSpring apartment complex in Tigard. I'm sure you are familiar with our situation, having been bought by predatory investors and exited from the affordable housing status. We are now in our final year of our state-mandated three-year safe harbor period and face the largest rent increases allowable by law in the upcoming years. We have also suffered the loss of our supportive senior community with the influx of new family-age tenants with increased noise and crime. Facing these rent increases and deteriorating conditions, our tenants are facing decisions that are being made in very rough market conditions, especially for affordable housing opportunities. Many of these people are very vulnerable, having aged in place and now have reduced abilities. The state of Oregon and Washington County have provided the effective tenants with small stipends to help with the increased expenses incurred due to these abusive investing strategies. The tenants are grateful for this, but we have some complaints about how the program is being administered. The payout has been slow in coming, and even with the help of the tenant organization, has been confusing and seems to be inadequate. Money was allocated for this purpose that doesn't seem to be reaching the tenants, and decisions have been made in untransparent ways as to who is eligible for the stipend and how much the stipend will be. I moved out in 2021 due to the risk of staying in this uncertain situation because of rate. A rare opportunity to move into another affordable housing development became available. I had to pay the moving fees imposed on my family and friends and suffered the stress of having to buy, build, and install mostly new furniture because my existing furniture would not fit into my reduced circumstances. I have lost due to this predatory investing and think those of us who have had to move should be helped by this effort, too. Please look into how this program has been administered and how the funds have been distributed. Thank you.
Next speaker? And while we're waiting for our speakers to come up to the mics or members of our community, if you go to the Washington County website, washingtoncountyor.gov, and search WoodSpring, you can find the most updated information. Hello, ma'am, could you please introduce yourself and address the board?
Yes, I, excuse me, Lois Keck. I have been a resident at WoodSpring since 2003. I'm echoing a lot of the things that Coy just shared with you. I choose to stay because I just turned 80, and I really feel that to force me at this point to move not only would be very difficult, it would be very expensive. Frankly, I feel it would shorten my life with the stress, et cetera. I choose to stay and fight for our affordable housing. I'm really quite concerned, I appreciate everything that the county has done to address WoodSpring's situation. I'm concerned at the slow process. Go back through notes, and we started talking about the stipend that we'll be getting in September. We just had a meeting on Thursday with Jay and Melissa, unfortunately, who was ill. And everything that we ask, we try to do, starting midsummer, is still in limbo. And now they're saying that it's going to be probably March before we get any money. This is my understanding, this money was to help the people who were going to leave WoodSpring, help them move their expenses. Now we're being told that the people that didn't want to risk staying, that have moved, will not be getting any of these funds. And it's just so wrong. So I guess I'm sounding like I'm begging, which I think I am, but could the board look at how we could increase the speed with which this money... at how we could increase the speed with which this money is allocated to us and maybe revisit the folks that opted to move, receive some compensation for that, as Coy just shared with you, what it's cost him? We have lost a lot of good people. We've lost a lot of our friends, and it's just wrong. So, that said, I took a picture of the meeting on Thursday, and I was going to print it out so I could show it to you, that we all are old and crippled, and maybe that would make a little more, oh, I don't know, you could relate to it a little bit more, but I don't, I have it on my phone, and I'm not going to pass my phone around and bore you with that. But help us, please, help us. And thank you, thank you, thank you for letting me share my feelings with you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Richard, will you be addressing us today?
Why not?
Okay. And for folks that are seeking further information, as you will see on the county's website, this program is one that was passed by the legislature last year, House Bill 5202. So Washington County is merely playing a supportive implementation role. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. And Lois represents the majority of the tenants in this formerly affordable property. Most of them are in her situation, immobile in some way or another. There is no affordable housing to go to, is the problem. That's the problem. There's people that'll move, and the ones that have moved are moving in with family, if they have it, but we have a lot of people there that don't have family to move to and can barely afford to stay there now and look forward. The rent is somewhat affordable at this point, but with this investor, whose purpose is to sell for a profit, I'm wondering, what else can you guys do to get some sort of a slowdown or put some brakes on what these investing landlords can do? They're forcing people out into the streets. We just talked with one yesterday. She will not be able to stay there, and she has no place to go, none. She gets $800 a month for her social security. She works, and she's 80-some. How old is she? 83. Come on. This is a cancer on our society. We have a right to have housing that we can afford. If we can't afford it, then somebody needs to help make it affordable. Now, the state has offered and given us a little assistance, which is, nobody's going to turn it down. But what's the plan? Do you folks have any plans of what you want to do county-wise to help? Do you have anything working? I know there's still money left over the state got. They got 100 million, I think it was. Any ideas? We were told the other day that the disbursement was 500,000, but 200,000 was being used up in administrative salary. Why? I thought that's, don't you all get paid something? Yeah? But do you have any idea of what to do? Do you have any thoughts? Anything, folks?
I'll respond partially. This is a time for us to take input, as you know. This is a much more complex issue than being portrayed. This was a bridge for many in the day. I was here at the time, and it was affordable housing, and it was meant to provide temporary housing, not forever. And these houses, units, as you know, are two-bedroom, two-bath. They're large units. I don't blame you for wanting to maintain those. I understand, and I'm not far off of your ages, so I, I mean, we can identify. We're desperately trying to figure out how to house a number of people, not just seniors, folks who are in desperate need of housing, and they have children and they have other circumstances.
Absolutely.
So it's not as easy as it makes it sound. It's just going picking money out. But I know that this board has worked very, very hard to try to make it as comfortable as possible. We've been told that there will be examinations to find housing so that you're not having that situation where people are leaving. And as far as the units, you also know that it wasn't necessarily said. These were developer, done housing at the time, that reverted back to private ownership. These are not public housing. These are private.
Sure.
And they've simply reverted back. So we can call them predatory, but that's, they bought it, and it's their housing. It's not ours, it's theirs. And we've spent vast amounts of time and effort attempting to do everything we can to maintain these. We haven't been as successful, and you know that and I know that. But again, we're in an economy in which people own property, and we can't tell them to give us their property. We've looked to try to buy those properties. We've looked at prices that are so unobtainable for us in terms of dollars per unit. But there isn't anybody up here who isn't empathizing and sympathizing both. I mean, we want to help. We're just trying to figure out how to do that. And you probably have read that we're $25 million short, at a minimum, in our own budget this year, in figuring out what we're going to cut and how we're going to do it. And so you don't go away thinking we're not compassionate people. I mean, we've been working overtime on this issue. And so to say, do you have a plan? The answer is, we're attempting to find housing. We're attempting to get monies released. We've worked with the legislature on a bill that provides them housing. So there's been a lot of effort. It's just not as quick as we all would like it to be. And are we going to stop our efforts? Absolutely not. Are you going to be satisfied? Probably not. Are we going to be satisfied? Probably not. But we're going to not give up, just like you're not giving up. But I don't think you're going to have us give you any specifics right now. We just, we take information in, we get staff input, and that's where we're at. So anyway, that's my comments.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and thanks for what you have done so far, but we're going to continue to be a thorn in everybody's side about this. Is there anything the county can do to put a moratorium or a freeze on rents? Anything to help people get through this?
So, sir, we'll leave this as the end of your public comment period. No, we don't have any efforts here in Washington County. The state legislature is looking at such efforts. An additional reason why we would not take those up here in Washington County is because all it would do is disadvantage members of the Washington County community and serve to the advantage of our adjoining communities, and that isn't how our housing sheds work here in our region. So we are very sensitive to the circumstances present here in our community, and we continue to work hard to try and address the deficit of housing availability at all income levels here in Washington County. It is taking time, and it is a very real and frustrating circumstance for many here in our community. Thank you very much for taking the time to address us as to being a thorn in our side. There isn't much more that we can do to help you at this juncture, so I urge you and all the tenants to work with the housing case manager that has been made available to the tenants of the WoodSpring Apartments and try and take advantage of those resources that have been provided through the actions of the state legislature. Thank you again.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Clerk Mas. The next item on the agenda is board announcements. I'll make the following meeting announcements. This Friday, January 20th, we will have a joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the Housing Advisory Committee at the Housing Forum, starting at 9:00 a.m. Next Tuesday, the fourth meeting of the month, we'll have a work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, and a board meeting in the evening at 6:30 p.m. Then, starting off the month of February already, on Thursday, February 2nd, we'll have a roundtable, starting at 9:00 a.m. The following Tuesday, February 7th, we'll have a work session in the morning, 9:00 a.m., board meeting at 10:00. We will not be having board meetings the following week, so February 14th, you don't need to show up for Board of Commissioners meetings because a few of us will be in Washington, D.C., attending the National Association of Counties meeting. Then, on Tuesday, the 21st, we'll have our work session at 9:00, our board meeting at 10:00. And then, the last Tuesday of the month, February 28th, we'll have our work session at 2:00 in the afternoon and a board meeting at 6:30 p.m. And I believe we are also planning on having a town hall in the month of February. Ms. Angie, do you have those particulars?
We are finalizing the date and time. It is anticipated to be February 22nd.
Okay. That would be a Wednesday, February 22nd, in the evening. All right, and you can find more information on that at the Washington County website, Are there any other board announcements at this time? Seeing none, I will remind us that we're going to pick back up at our work session at 11:00 in our work session room. And until then, do we have a motion to adjourn this board meeting?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous, lead for five to zero. We are hereby adjourned.